Okay Paula, we are live.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you so much for coming to our UHB Virtual Town Hall Meeting with President Glenn and Provost Glenn. We thought that this would be a way to give people a chance to ask their questions about the fall semester and come together before the fall semester starts. As you all know, these are not normal times, and so we thought this would be a good way to help people get their questions answered. So, wanted to just tell you all a little bit about the format. Thank you to everybody who submitted questions ahead of the event. Provost Glenn and President Glenn are going to give a few opening remarks, and then they will launch into the questions that were sent in ahead of time. For the last 20 or so minutes of the event, we will open up the live event Q&amp;A, and anybody who still has a question at that time, we'd love it for you all to type in your question. And then the last 15 or so minutes of the event until 11 o'clock, I will be reading those questions to the Provost and the President, and they'll be answering those. We will be making a recording of this event, just so everybody knows, and we'll be posting it afterwards. We'll get out an email later today, giving everybody that link. So, thank you so much for coming. President Glenn?
You're muted, maybe?
You are muted.
All right, so clearly, I'm not as smart as the technology. I'm going to start by trying to answer several questions in a general comment. Most folks are curious about the same things, and a lot of those deal with, why do we think that our plan to open up next week is going to have any result other than the plans at University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, or Columbia, or Notre Dame, or all the other large institutions that have already failed so spectacularly? So let me try to provide some context for how we find ourselves in the place that we're at. First and foremost, we're a state institution, and as such, we're required, and I apologize for the sound that keeps going off here as people... I'm going to try turning off my notifications. We're a state institution, and as such, we're governed by the mandates from the governor. The governor has mandated that state institutions should be open at least 50% of capacity. The Board of Regents has indicated that they want us to follow the mandates of the governor, and the chancellor has indicated to the presidents that we should make our best effort. So we, as you all know, put together a task force that had a majority of faculty participating in that task force to put together a plan to open safely. Now, why will we be different from others? I do think there's an opportunity for us to succeed where others have failed. If you look at the news reports about what has happened on these other institutions, you're talking about institutions that have a large residential community. They have a large Greek community, so there's Greek housing on the campus. Most of these places, I've been to these campuses, have a large number of bars immediately adjacent to the campus to make it easier for students to do their business. And in almost every single case, the culprit that resulted in a surge in cases on those campuses came about as a result of large gatherings of students. In some cases, 400 or 500 students gathered together in close proximity without any precautions whatsoever. So, I think we're in better shape because that doesn't describe our campus. We have a smaller campus community, we're in a more rural and isolated environment. Our students typically are not engaged in those large off-campus parties, so I think we have a chance to succeed where others have failed. Can we go awry? Absolutely, without question. Can there be a spike in cases? Certainly, that's a possibility. A lot of people have said, "Well, what exactly will... what are the exact conditions under which you'll decide to move back from Phase 3 to Phase 2 or something else along those lines?" And again, ours is a slightly more complicated situation. I can tell you that we will be monitoring local conditions. When we moved from Phase 2 to Phase 3, it was because we had gone from 700 cases a week down to about 250 cases a week. So we were moving locally in the right direction. I would remind people that the county health officer is a member of the reopening task force that has been meeting weekly to review these circumstances. We also have a COVID-19 Operations Center now, and Allison is doing a fine job of monitoring local conditions and keeping us posted on where we are. She's also engaging in contract tracing on those cases that have arisen on our campus. So we think that we're in a better position to monitor what is going on and be able to make good choices. I can't give you exact numbers. I can't say we're going to move back if we have 12 cases on campus, because it will all be a matter of context. If we have 12 cases on campus, and seven of them are students who are taking classes only online, and one is a faculty member that is in West, and another is a staff member in North, and, you know, one's in Katy, all of those kinds of things have an impact. If we had 12 cases all in Smith Hall, that would be a major problem, and we'd have to take action immediately based on that. So it's difficult for me to give you a precise indication of exactly how we respond. What I can tell you is that we're going to be doing our best to go point to point. We are going to be looking each day at where we are and how we're doing and what's going on in the local area. We'll be utilizing all of our opportunities to get information and make a sort of... excuse me, someone's just walked into my office.
There's like 20, 30 faculty together on the meeting. It is not this meeting. Nobody can hear me, just like...
Okay. Where is that meeting occurring?
I'm taking care of it, Dr. Glenn.
Okay. Kayla?
I'm on it. I got it.
Dr. Seer just told me that there are about 20 or 30 faculty who are on their computers and cannot hear what I am saying.
I know. There's somewhere they got into a different meeting.
That I'm not sure what's going on. They clicked on the links on their calendars, but they are not able to hear anything I am saying.
I got the new link to it.
Those of you who can hear me, I hope that we're going to be able to clear that up, and I may have to do some backtracking. But the bottom line of this situation, I believe, is that we're doing the best we can within the confines. Yes, Dr. Glenn?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can't hear you.
Okay, because I know Kayla was speaking, and she couldn't hear... I can hear you.
You can hear me, but I can't hear you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got them the new meeting link. Somehow, some people ended up in the wrong place.
Dr. Glenn, and Paula Cobbler, and Kayla, but we'll try to make sure.
Kayla, can you hear me?
Kayla, can you give us some indication of if we can continue, or if we need to restart this?
We're good. Continue on. I don't know if you can hear me.
Kayla, can you hear me? We've got a lot of people who can't hear.
All right, Kayla says she can hear both of us.
I can hear both of you.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't know what's going on. I'm here.
The faculty who apparently can't hear me hooked up.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Now then, a number of folks have asked about, are we going to be doing staff layoffs or faculty layoffs? My position on that has been very clearly stated. I have no intention of laying anyone off. I have said before, I will sell the furniture before I will lay off a single staff member or faculty member. We will exhaust every other possibility. Now, I will tell you that we do have some budget concerns that we're looking at. We're down only about 45% of occupancy in our Residence Hall. That's likely to produce somewhere between a $3 and a $5 million hole in our budget. We are work, looking at what we can do to make that hole again. But we will not make it whole again by letting people go. That won't help us any. So you need to understand that our commitment is to keep our current faculty and staff intact, and to go forward from that, and to make sure that we can maintain our campus community. Our greatest resource is our people. We're going to protect our people at all costs. Now, there had been some questions about new academic majors and new programs. I'm going to let the Provost talk more about that in greater detail, but let me simply say that we do have an academic strategic plan that is nearing completion. We have an enrollment management strategic plan that is nearing completion, and we will then begin to develop a physical plant, master plan. We'll pull these three documents together. We can then give you an idea of how we want to go forward. We do need new majors on this campus. I do see the sciences as being a very fertile area for us. Agriculture, engineering, these are areas where we could prosper in our region. So we're going to do our best to bring those forth, but there is a process that we go through. There's a process on campus through the Curriculum Committee, then there's a process with the Deans and the Provost, and then that moves to the Provost Council at the system level, and that goes all the way to the Coordinating Board. So it will not be something that we can do quickly and easily, but we are moving forward in that direction. Now, there were a number of questions about specifics within the academic program, so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the Provost and let him respond to those, and then we'll have some time at the end to try to circle back around if we need to.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Glenn. I hope, before I go, I hope that we are, you know, addressing some of the sound issues, but even so, I hope that the recording that we're making will pick up everything that's been said, because I know pieces of what you've said, it was not heard by everyone, but it was very important. So, I'm also hoping that... because I'm unmuted. I've verified that, and I think there's even some people that may not be able to hear me, but I'm going to keep talking. Perhaps those who can hear me just send me an affirmative. With regard to, first of all, let's address the task force and how that was pulled together. As this unfolded in March, we pulled together a group that was comprised of people from all parts of the campus, all parts of the university, both here and in Katy. Faculty members, staff members, students as well, and began to address how we needed to respond, you know, as once we closed. And if you also remember, the fire that we had in the West Building precipitated the decisions that we needed to make, even as we closed early for the spring, or for the spring break last year, or this year, I should say. And so after that, we began to use our... the committee to develop a plan for how we would reopen, given that we were closed. And from the academic standpoint, we wanted to say, how could we develop a way to, one, create a graduated step in phases, which is what kind of best practices were? So we have these phases, starting from Phase 1 up to Phase 5. Phase 1 was fully closed and all of that, and now we have all of that information up on our website. We're currently in Phase 3, but academically, we needed to determine a way that we could deliver as best an academic experience for our students on top of being safe, being responsible with our people and our community. So, you know, this was the way we addressed the plan, and this is what we came to. So there were a lot of things passed around, but in the end, recommendation was that we could utilize a technology, and interestingly enough, we have some technology problems now, but, you know, utilize a technology to deliver learning in real time to our students. And the student members of the committee was also very, you know, agreeable and appreciative of this notion to do that, and that's where, you know, utilization of teams, delivering lectures in real time. We then moved very quickly to look at the classrooms and how that technology would work so that we could stream out. So then we create, we build in this flexibility. And flexibility and adaptability was built into our plan as well. We wanted to make sure that, you know, people who are not comfortable being on campus, for whatever reason it might be, would not have to, but yet we could operate and keep our educational enterprise running. And that's where we find ourselves today. So now, as we approach Monday, we have a plan to deliver our coursewares in such a way that allows those students that want to attend face-to-face courses, those faculty members who want to deliver face-to-face in a safe and responsible way, with social distancing in place, with mask-wearing being mandatory in the classrooms and in public spaces, for, you know, regular cleanings in between classroom sessions, and limiting the number of students that are in the classroom at any given time. Faculty members with face shields, so all of those measures in place in order to address this. So that's how we approached this. That's where we are now, and we worked with, and one of the faculty members of the committee was, at the time, the current president of the Faculty Senate, Dr. Keith Akins, and he clearly was not shy in bringing forward, you know, issues, concerns, and input and ideas from the faculty, which we used, and we, all of the members of the committee communicated with the... their constituents and brought that information back. Now, I want to just confirm that I'm being heard. Can someone just say so as I go to the next point? Paula, am I good?
You're good.
Okay. All right. The other issue I wanted to bring up was just to talk about some of the new programs and courses. We are developing and putting finishing touches on a really comprehensive academic strategic plan, which, you know, includes some restructuring, some new programs, and what I wanted to say is that our, you know, we... as President Glenn mentioned, there is a process by which that we would bring new programs to bear. It's got to start with the faculty, and then we approve that up all the way through to, you know, this office, then goes out to Provost Council, then to our Board of Regents, and then to the Coordinating Board, and then to SACS. You know, and all of that takes some time, so even if we started today, we could be... would be talking about probably a minimum of a year before seeing new programs started, but maybe more depending on their complexity. Some of the technical programs, like the engineering and computer science, where we have already, but those that require what's called ABD accreditation will have additional requirements and restrictions that we would have to meet. However, those processes are underway, and we are talking about the specifics even now. So just stay tuned, and I think that we will be able to take advantage of the desires of our region in some of these programs that we have prepared. The other thing I wanted to talk about was a question regarding tenure track, tenure and promotion review. And, you know, particularly, you know, we put some messaging out there that said that, you know, faculty members can request a extension or stoppage of their tenure clock, you know, for the reasons that they would, you know, put forward, and we would be, you know, very much, you know, open and accommodating for those issues related to COVID, particularly where research, you can't get to your lab, you can't get to your, whatever, you know, your means might be of your scholarship, and even teaching and things like that. So we understand that. The question also was, does that extension... is this just for people who are going up right now? But this is for everybody who might be, who are on the tenure track. If because of this situation, there's been some, you know, disruption in your ability to do your scholarship and your teaching and your community or service to the institution, you can request a stoppage of your tenure clock, and that will be accommodated. But we'll take the channels that are already established to do so, so we don't have to rewrite the faculty manual and all that stuff. We just, you know, bring it forward under those conditions, but we will address it in that manner. So I think that that will, that has addressed the academic side of things, but what I want to also say is that I, you know, personally, am very, very appreciative of what the faculty have been doing, have done over the past semester, through the summer, and even now to prepare and to adapt, and those who are willing to come and try to do some face-to-face, really, you know, commend people for that. But here, the three items that I want us to focus on, and I think that'll make it work, and that is cooperation, communication, and flexibility. You know, cooperate together, students, faculty, staff, all, you know, wearing masks, looking out for each other, social distancing, we're helping each other to be accountable to that. That's what's going to work for us. Communicating what's working, what's not working, what's happening around us, who's in trouble, who's, you know, let's help each other. If somebody's struggling with something, let's help them. Bringing materials to them, all that kind of stuff. That's the communication aspect, and then the flexibility to say, okay, this is working, but maybe we've got to pivot here, and if we need to pull back a phase, or if we need to, you know, move forward a phase, or hold still, let's communicate. And we commit from the executive committee standpoint that that's something we will be doing. You know, the Provost Office, the Deans, all of our directors that are part of this Academic Affairs are committing that that's the strategy, and that's a philosophy that we will be taking forward as we go through this, because we're all in this together. You know, I have a couple of kids who are students here, so I have, from a parent's standpoint, I have that same, you know, concern that we have, plus from, obviously, from, you know, the Academic Affairs standpoint. So I want to make sure we get this right and do everything that we possibly can to get this right, and I think that that's what we're doing, but this has happened because everybody has come together and we've made collective decisions and then put that forward. So that's where I would leave my comments based upon the questions that I've saw, and of course, if there's other things, they can come out in the questions that'll be put forward live. So that's where I leave it. Paul and President Glenn, I'll turn it back over to you.
It sounds like that was the answers to all the questions that you received. Is that right, Provost Glenn?
I think so. I've looked through them all. I kind of, you know, consolidated all of the comments based upon that, so I think so. There are some things about students not refusing to wear masks, in particularly in campus, on buildings. The issue there is that that would... students refusal is a student conduct issue that would be reported as such. And I know that Student Affairs and Dr. Lambert is providing some communication for us, for the faculty, in case that's needed. But in the classrooms, the protocol is that all students should be wearing masks. If they have some sort of waiver from Disability Services about wearing a mask, they must wear a face shield. Face shields that we provide, faculty can be provided with extras. The COVID Operations Center has them as well, but face shields that they can utilize, if they refuse to wear that, then they cannot be in the classrooms, and they would have to leave. And if they refuse to leave, then it becomes a student conduct issue. From the, you know, staff and faculty standpoint, that's a supervisory issue, and for visitors on campus, then that would be a security issue.
Dr. Glenn, let me just say that Dr. Lambert has indicated that a member of his staff will always be available to respond to a faculty call if there's a concern about a student who won't cooperate, and they'll come over and deal with it directly. You know, it is a student conduct issue. If a student fails to reply appropriately and respond appropriately to a directive from a faculty member, that becomes a conduct issue, and they will deal with that if you're not comfortable dealing with it. In my own experience, when I point out to students that they need to adjust their mask or whatever, they're always able to respond to that.
Okay. And those, that number would be made available to...
Yes. We'll send that out by a campus email, but they're going to give you their cellphone numbers so that you can call them directly. They have specific time periods when they're going to be immediately available to come and respond to that. For that matter, any faculty member that wants to can call me, and I'll come deal with the student. I don't mind doing that a bit, but the bottom line is that students are expected to wear masks on campus unless they have a specified medical condition that prevents them from doing so, which will be verified by our ADA officer, and they'll have the ability to demonstrate that they are... that they have an accommodation, but that accommodation will be wearing a face shield. They can't just go without anything.
One more comment I want to make, I was looking at the questions, and this is just about, you know, the fact that we're offering things as, you know, whether it's online or, you know, asynchronous or synchronous-type streaming, as well as, you know, our face-to-face offerings, and what adjustments we're making. This is what we're doing to address the situation that we have today. You know, President Glenn and I are fully committed that our goal is to build a residential campus here in Victoria, growing based upon the programs we have, as well as new programs, and that's the normal that we want to return to once we've made our way through this situation. Now, there are going to be things that we learn, there's going to be some best practices and some innovations that may help us, you know, go forward in the future, but, you know, we are committed to do this, as we stated, and our, you know, long-term academic plan is built around that notion as well.
We've also had some questions about how long we'll be working remotely, how long folks will be able to take advantage of that, and the clear answer is, I don't know. We will, again, continue to monitor that on a regular basis, and it may be that it will be quite some time before some people come back to campus. It will depend in large respect to what the nature of your job is. So, and just taking some examples off the top of my head, if you're a graphic designer in communications, you may not be back on campus for some time, you may not be back on campus this semester, because you can adequately take care of your job needs from where you are. But if you're a financial aid counselor or an admissions counselor, someone who has to deal with students directly, we may... we may need to have you back on campus sooner than that. And that is, as we've said before in all of our emails, a matter for you and your supervisor to discuss. For instance, in my office, I asked my folks to start being in the office next week, but not all at once. One person will come in in the morning, one midday, one in the afternoon. So we'll expect each supervisor to work with the folks in their unit to take care of student needs. That's the number one issue. Are the needs of our students being taken care of? That's what we've got to figure out. So we'll keep going with this as long as necessary. And depending on who you listen to, it may be quite some time before we have everybody back on campus. There may be some time in the next month or so where we can move safely to Phase Four. But I doubt seriously we'll be at Phase Five, which is everything's back to normal, before some time in the spring.
Okay, we opened up the live event Q and A a little early, and so we're getting some questions in. President Glenn and Provost Glenn, can you both hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So the first question we have is, news reports suggest a major problem in, is students getting together for private parties not sponsored by the university? How will we address this potential issue?
That will be a student conduct issue. That'll be handled by Student Affairs. We have a clear policy in place that prohibits large gatherings of any sort. So if that occurs, that will be an issue, but will also involve the COVID Operations Center because contact tracing will be necessary at that point in time. As I said earlier, I don't think everybody was able to hear me. You know, the thing that is different between us and institutions like UNC Chapel Hill and Notre Dame and others is that we don't have the same campus culture. Those are institutions where there's a strong social campus culture. They have a large fraternity and sorority houses. They have an area around each of those campuses that has bars and restaurants and other activities, and that's simply not the case here. So I think we have a better chance of avoiding the things that have occurred at other institutions, but we're just going to have to keep an eye on. We're just going to have to wait and see. We're going to be talking with students. We're going to be telling them what our expectations are. Can students disappoint us? Absolutely. We're just going to have to wait and see.
Okay, we have another question about will there be anybody stationed at the all-temperature checks on campus to make sure that students aren't just bypassing that without checking their temperatures in the morning?
Dr. Glenn?
Well, that's, that's not a plan that we have at the moment. Those checks are there. Because one of the things we have, there is a self-evaluation process that everyone could, should go through before coming to campus every day. And this is something that is available by, from, through our Operations Center, the required steps. And there are, there are more than just the temperature checks. But at the current moment, there isn't a plan to have someone, you know, manning and then stopping people at the temperature checks. That's something so that we can self, you know, self-evaluate every day.
Okay, we also have a series of questions about recording asynchronous classes. Is there a mandate that we must record the synchronous classes? I am uneasy about the ethics of recording students. What about getting their permission? Should students be worried that their comments might be used by peers against them to create humiliating public social media viral videos? And is there a statement we should put on our syllabi about recording?
First, first part of that question is that we have, you know, put this question forward to our, our leading counsel to determine if there's any issues with regard to FERPA and others, and they're not. We can record class lectures and things like that. There's not a mandate to do so. This is a, this is a best practice. I think this is something that can be beneficial, not only to the students, but also for the faculty members as they begin to, you know, accumulate a repository of their lectures and information that could be utilized, you know, to their benefit later. But again, the, 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 the way things are delivered, we want to make sure that the students that are, if this is a real-time delivery, that everybody that's supposed to be in a class can, can participate and be involved. And it is up to the faculty member to record in post. That's just a recommendation and a best practice that we would suggest. The second part of the question, if there's a second part, repeat that.
I think it had to do with syllabus language. And we have forwarded to the deans the recommendations from the UH System Office of Legal Counsel about what should be included in syllabi related to this topic. I would also point out that if there are subjects being discussed that could be potentially revealing, whether it's asynchronous and recorded or not, faculty should be talking to their students and making sure that everybody understands the basic ground rules. Now, strictly speaking, under FERPA, it is not a violation of FERPA for a faculty member to record the content of a class and to make it available to members in the class. It cannot be released outside of that class without written permission. But strictly speaking, if a student was in a face-to-face class and made a statement that others then used to bully that student on social media, wouldn't matter whether or not it was recorded. What would matter is how we responded to it. And as soon as we became aware of that sort of social media bullying, we would take action through the student conduct process.
Okay, is there a set instructor-to-student ratio for face-to-face?
Instructor to stu-, well, the percentages that we work with will, are the percentages numbers in the classroom. And then the, we also are limited by the number of students that can be enrolled in any course, you know, through, you know, the registrar's office. So the percentages that we're dealing with under the phase that we're in will, you know, limit how many students are provided for any given faculty member in any class in any section. So I think that, that's the best, the best way that we can address that question.
And how about the parking fee? Will it be suspended until we reach a higher tier of reopening?
I'm not aware of any plan to suspend parking fees. I think that the Business Office will be trying to implement that in a manner that is consistent and fair going into this semester. I do want to point out, I've gotten lots and lots of emails and questions. You know, I don't come to campus in a car or, you know, I only come every once in a while. People who do not have cars on campus will not be being charged a fee for that. Only the folks who are parking on a daily basis on campus will be paying the fee. And the fee, again, was developed and determined by Faculty and Staff Committee that was used to survey, to vet the members of the faculty and staff. And everything that was asked for has been included in that policy. And, you know, they're going to be doing their very best to put it into place.
We also have a question about Chick-fil-A. This says, I also know that the, the car line at the other Chick-fil-A restaurant near HEB Plus is pretty long on most days. I wanted to see if there are plans to control the flow of traffic and visitors who come to the UHV Chick-fil-A? And is it safe to eat there? Are students or locals eating there?
Well, first of all, one of the interesting things about our Chick-fil-A, if you are like me and you have the Chick-fil-A app on your smartphone, you will not find our Chick-fil-A on that app. So most folks in the general community will not be aware of the location of the Chick-fil-A. I was in the Chick-fil-A yesterday. I highly recommend the nuggets. I went over there to get my lunch. And while I was there, there were folks that had come over from Citizens and were getting sandwiches to take back. There was a woman and two of her children who live in the neighborhood immediately adjacent. So, you know, yes, people are going to find out that it's there. They do not have the ability to call ahead and order and have curbside pickup. It may be that, once we get past the pandemic, we might be able to figure that out by using some way to loop around the building. But we're not going to tie up more than one or two spaces in the parking lot for Chick-fil-A. That's not what that parking lot is there for. So, again, it's, it's going to be a learning curve. We're going to have to see what is necessary. But our belief in putting the Chick-fil-A there was that there'd be sufficient business from our campus community and from both UHV and Victoria College students that it would not require them to have to do extensive marketing to folks off-campus. But my overwhelming experience with all Chick-fil-A's is people find them and they come and use them.
Okay, do we have thresholds and numbers that would indicate that we should downgrade in our phased reopening plan?
Again, as I talked about earlier, I'm not sure everybody had an opportunity to hear me. I will be monitoring the numbers, but no, I can't give you a set number. I can't say it would take 12 cases for us to move back a phase because it will all be a matter of context. Where are those 12 cases located? If, if we have 12 cases and seven of them are online students who haven't been on campus and one is a faculty member in West and another is a staff member in North and a third is a staff member in the Commons, and there's been no significant interaction with others as demonstrated by contact tracing, we probably would not shut down. But if we had 12 cases in Smith Hall or 12 cases in Jag Hall, that would be a significant event. So I can't give you precise numbers because it's just not possible for me to do so. I will tell you that is precisely the reason why we developed the COVID Operations Center and hired Jessica for that position. She's doing a fine job of monitoring what's going on on campus and keeping in touch with local conditions. I would also remind people that the County Health Officer is a member of the reopening task force that meets on a regular basis. So we are keeping in close, as close an eye as we're able on conditions, and we will respond to those. But I can't give you precise numbers if that's what you're looking for.
Okay, we have a question, and it looks like Dr. Lambert has also answered it a little bit. So let me see if either of you want to say anything else. But the question was, does, will COVID testing be provided to on-campus students? And Dr. Lambert responded that students will be required to go through the same training as faculty and staff and verify that they will go through those self-checks and follow UHV and CDC guidelines. Do you want to add anything else?
Yeah, we do not have testing per se available on campus. There are resources available in the community, and our COVID Operations Center can connect folks with Citizens or Dtar or any of the other places where testing can occur.
Okay, someone else is asking, can you repeat where the self-check temperature locations are?
There's one in West, there's one in the center. I believe there's one in North. I'm not clear if there's other, other areas. I need John Burke. Could be, it could be the one to help us answer that more clearly about more specific ones. Leave over in the Commons and the dorms. But I, I need to, perhaps I can get John Burke to give us a specific answer on those questions.
Okay, another question about recording of classes. Will students be informed that these classes will not necessarily be recorded? Or has that notification already happened?
I'm sorry, what was that question again?
Will students be informed that these classes will not necessarily be recorded or has that notification already happened? Do students know?
The, the, the faculty members are, will inform students based upon the decisions that they have made on whether or not their classes will be recorded and their syllabi will reflect the decision that they've made regarding that. So that will be on an individual basis on each class, depending on what the faculty members decide.
Okay, the question is, what is your opinion of the downward trend of active cases of COVID in Victoria as it relates to moving to the next phase?
Well, we'd like to continue to see a downward trend. We were, I think, at a high at one point of about 750 active cases a week. We're down to around 250. I'd like to see that get down closer to 100 before we would even begin to consider moving to the next phase upward. But if the cases continue to go through this downward trend, we would consult with the County Health Officer and we would discuss it with the Director of the COVID Operations Center and try to make a good choice. But that would be a call made by the task force, which I would, again, remind you, has both faculty and staff representation on.
Okay, and someone else wants to know both of your thoughts on what if we made the student PAW pass a part of contact tracing? If the PAW passes were scanned as students enter all buildings, then we would know where they were, at what time and day? And so this person wants to know what your thoughts would be on that.
That'd be something we would take up with the, with the task force. However, the, the training and the methodology for contact tracing has been, you know, undergone by the members of the Operations Center, as well as additional members on campus who have been trained to do so. And if we're going to change any of the protocols that we currently use, you know, that would be something that have to conform with those training protocols. So we're comfortable in the processes that we do have. And if there's a way to enhance that, that's something that we would have to discuss and look at and, and implement if it does indeed help us.
I'd also have to ask the folks at Information Technology whether or not we have on campus the appropriate technology to do what they're asking about in terms of using the PAW pass as a way of contact tracing.
Okay, would the university consider having disinfecting portals at entrances to our buildings and dorms?
What we do have are, you know, the sanitizer and the hand gel, the sanitizer gel at each door, along with the temperature checks. And then each of the offices are provided sanitizer as well. So, so that's, that's, that's where we are. And I'm not sure what other measures we might be talking about, but the hand sanitizer is, is being distributed widely and available at every entrance port.
Another question about recording. Is it required to record lectures if you are teaching real-time online classes?
My response to that is if you're teaching real-time classes, everybody who should be there or supposed to be there should be there, whether they're in the classroom or whether they're being, you know, streamed in. So if you have a time set, that is when the student is required. The, the recording is a courtesy, you know, that could be provided for those who might need it and want it. So, you know, I would say that if it's something that you want to do that is that is gonna enhance the delivery, then do so. But if it's something you want to also provide as an asynchronous kind of tool and additional learning so that students can review lectures so that people who may have real reasons why they cannot attend at the time might be able to review those things, I think that's a courtesy that can be provided to the students. And, you know, given there's no objections for students that are a part of the class, you know, that's something that the faculty member can do.
Okay, by the way, John Burke responded that the self-check temperature stations are at the main entrance.
Dropped out.
Sorry. They're at the main entrances of West Center, North Commons, and Jaguar Hall at this time.
Okay, so I thought, okay.
Someone else asked if we are still following austerity measures?
Yes, we are. As I, again, not everyone was able to hear this at the beginning. It was a question about whether or not we were gonna lay staff off or lay off faculty members. Our response to that has been consistent from the beginning. We will not lay off anyone unless that is absolutely the last option available to us. I will sell off the furniture. I'll delay hiring. I'll do anything I can do before I consider any kind of a layoff of any, even one staff member. We'll delay rehiring people. We'll use adjuncts rather than filling a full-time position. We'll do everything we can think of. But we do have somewhere in the neighborhood of a $3 to $5 million hole in our budget that we've got to figure out how to fix. We're currently ahead in terms of enrollment for the fall semester. That should be helpful, but at the same time, we're down to about 45% in our residence halls. And our residence halls are always self-sufficient when they're at 80 to 90% occupancy, which they have been consistently since we opened the residence halls. So we do have a problem in that we're gonna have a hole in our auxiliary revenues that we're gonna have to figure out how to take care of. I will point out that our current plan continues to have in it the possibility of merit and equity to possibly be considered in the spring semester. But we've got to get past an awful lot of bumps in the road before we get to that point. But yes, we are still under austerity measures. We are reviewing any position before it's advertised. We're cutting back. We have not had to take some of the measures that have been taken on our other sister campuses. But yes, we're still being as stingy as we can possibly be until we know what the final situation's gonna be.
Okay, how will we know if we have an outbreak of cases on campus if we're not testing?
Testing is available connected to, you know, our different, whether it's the county, DTA's, citizens. You know, upon request, and if symptoms are being displayed, then we would get, you know, testing done. An outbreak would be a showing of symptoms. So, you know, we don't have a position or method in place that every student is tested upon every day and things like that. So it's gonna be driven by the same practices that the County Health and our other, you know, health organizations around the region carry out. That's how we're gonna have to know. Now, I do know that the athletic program has direct connections to the county to get testing done again by request also. And so that's how we're continuously demonetoring that situation.
Okay, we also have a couple of questions about Teams versus Zoom. Do faculty have to use Teams for classes, or are they allowed to use Zoom?
We prefer Teams for a couple of reasons. First reason is that this is something that we're using throughout the campus. It's connected to Office 365, which we all have and utilize. You know, all the licenses and things like that are available. The ability to have recordings if we need them and how to access them is understood, and we have provided a series of training around all of that. You know, Bev Horgan and her group, they are, you know, constantly providing training and input as well as, you know, Kayla has been working, Savington has been working diligently to provide the channels for all of the classes and that we can, you know, keep that, manage all of that in one place. The other issue with Zoom, and, you know, I think they've since, you know, fixed, may have since fixed a problem, but, you know, what they call Zoom bombing and some of the security issues that were popping up because of Zoom. So we are, you know, reluctant to suggest that as a tool. So we would prefer that, you know, the Teams be utilized wherever we do this.
Okay, I've gotten a couple messages. Just so you both know, that people are still very confused about the recording of classes based on an email that we sent to students back in July that says that real-time online class sessions will be recorded to offer access at a later time, and also the hybrid will be recorded to offer access at a later time. So that may be something that needs to be discussed or changed.
Okay.
Dr. Glenn, I'd suggest you take that up with the deans, maybe today if you're able to, so that we can send out consistent information about the faculty and the students.
Will do, will do.
I think we have covered all the questions that I have gotten. Do either of you want to say any last words?
The main thing I would say is something I've said before several times at the cabinet hearings and other gatherings, and that is that I would encourage folks to continue to be patient with us. There is no user's manual for what we're going through at this point in time. There's no chartered course through these waters. We are trying to go point-to-point like a riverboat captain. We're trying to get from here to the bend in the river, and we don't know what's around the river, and we can't make decisions about that until we see. I understand that people are anxious about what's going forward. I appreciate that. I would just ask you to be candid without being rancorous. Tell us what your concerns are. Talk to us. But I'm gonna have to ask you to be patient because we don't know all the answers. We can't predict everything that's gonna happen.